Good evening. Welcome to the June 4, 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting of the Exeter Township School Board. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Feig, could you take roll call, please?
Jason Mel.
Present.
Julia Schaefer.
Present.
Deborah Bloom.
Present.
Dr. Andrea Battler.
Here.
John Fidler.
Here.
Dr. Anne Herring. Timothy Morgan.
Here.
Travis Odom.
Here.
Allison Wilson. Seven present, two absent.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Feig. In addition to the seven board members in attendance this evening, we are also joined at the board table by our solicitor Sharon Montane and members of the school district administration, including Dr. Kristi Howler Superintendent, Mrs. Dawn Harris Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Josh Hoyt Director of Teaching and Learning, Mrs. Diane Skornavaki Director of Human Resources, and Mr. Brian Feig, who serves as our Business Administrator and Board Secretary. The meeting minutes are attached. Does anybody have any changes or discussion they would like to make regarding meeting minutes for the May 8, 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting or the May 21, 2024 Board Voting Meeting? Okay, next, we will be recognizing students from the senior high school in Reifton for their collaboration on a group project.
Hi, everybody. So, this is actually the culmination of kind of a year-long endeavor between the high school and Reifton. Earlier this year, Mr. Potter reached out to me in the fall and asked about, you know, some, you know, opportunities for his high school students to do some collaboration with some of the students at Reifton to design fidget spinners. I thought that was a pretty cool and pretty neat activity. So, I reached out to Mr. Blatt, who is the gifted teacher at Reifton, asked him if he had some students that would be interested in this as an enrichment activity, and he took the ball and kind of went running with it. And so throughout the year, there's been this ongoing collaboration. So what's being passed around right now is the end products that you can see in that blue bucket. We have students here tonight from Reifton and from the high school. So if the high school students would come up as well. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Potter and Mr. Blatt to talk a little bit more about this. And Mr. Potter can do more of the technical explanation as to what's going on here, as I am a novice when it comes to the 3D printing and the STEM components to all of what you're seeing in front of you.
Yeah, so, Mr. Potter, for those of you that don't know me, I teach STEM engineering and technology education at the high school. And so in our introduction to engineering class, this is a project that we implemented probably about four or five years ago when we got some of our 3D printing technology. I just saw it as something that's a good reverse engineering project. The kids take the bearings, they have to reverse engineer that, and then they have to make it into a fidget spinner. The only problem with the project was that ninth graders and 10th graders don't really care about fidget spinners anymore because they're too old for that and too cool for that. So my goal was to keep the project but make it more fun and more collaborative. I thought it'd be a really good idea to give the kids the opportunity to have a client or a stakeholder that we call them to, you know, communicate with and to collaborate with and ultimately to design for. And so we just, like I said, Dr. Alcarro put us together with Mr. Blatt, and his students did basically the first part of the work where they did the design. So all of the designs that you see there are his students', you know, ideas come to life. And then my students took their sketches and turned them into what you see there. So again, a collaboration of some efforts of our kids and the kids up at the senior high. So I'm really impressed with what our kids did. I'm even more impressed with what the five-six kids did. And I'm excited to keep this project going. Me and Mr. Blatt aren't going to continue with it next year. I don't know if you know that or not, but I'm switching over to the art department. But we're going to try to keep this going every year and give kids this opportunity every year. And I just, I think it's really cool. So thank you to our five-six kids, and thank you to our high school kids, and thank you to Dr. Alcarro and Mr. Blatt for making it all happen.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Blatt, you want to talk? I just took all the air.
If we, if we could, I would actually ask, does any of the Reifton students want to talk a little bit about what you had to do for this? Anybody? You don't want to talk about it at all? All right, no, that's okay. I'll let Mr. Blatt talk about it, though, because he was the one that was with you every step of the way.
So sometimes when, when you're teaching, you're so focused on so many of the important things that you have to do that you don't make time to get out the colored pencils. And seeing students working with isometric graph paper, which, if you're not familiar with that, it's graph paper that has diagonal lines going through it as well. And it seemed like the possibilities were endless, and the creativity was just flowing and flowing. And I didn't realize how long the students would want to work on it. And they were encouraged to make several designs, and I was blown away. And I thought, there's no way that these are going to be able to be made. So I was always, I was assuming that the simpler design is what we were going to see in the buckets. And it's the first time I've seen them, and I'm blown away by, by the work and the design. And we even had one collaboration where two siblings were working together, one from the high school and one at Reifton. So that was a neat, neat culmination of effort. So I applaud all the students. They did an amazing job.
Does anybody have any questions, comments?
Joe, what, what happens to them now, to the fidgets? Are you going to sell them or display them?
Yes, on eBay in about 15 minutes. No, we're going to, we will give them back to the, to the students who designed them. So the students who designed their own fidget spinner will get them back. So Mr. Potter and Mr. Blatt, you know, have been coordinating throughout the entire year. And so we'll make sure that the person who designed the fidget spinner will get that fidget spinner returned to them. So I can tell you, from being the Assistant Principal earlier this year at Reifton to now being in this position, I was there when this kind of started. And it's really neat to kind of see that. And I do know that, you know, I checked in with students throughout the year as this was, was occurring. So it is kind of cool to see the, the end result. All right. Well, thank you very much for coming tonight. Really appreciate all your efforts. Thank you, parents and guardians, for bringing them out, and I hope you have a wonderful evening.
And Mr. Alcarro, I was also just wondering, when you sell these on eBay, does that revenue then come to the district, or does that go back to them?
You'd have to ask Mr. Feig that question. I'm not sure how that gets categorized.
Okay.
I will ask Mr. Potter, though, to come back up here. As the, the students, please feel free. You do not have to stay. But Mr. Potter, I did want to also ask him to speak for a few minutes about the other clubs that he is, you know, responsible for organizing and running at the high school. He had a very successful year with those, those activities. So if you just wanted to take a few minutes to talk about that.
Yeah, thank you. So again, as many of you know, I'm the advisor for the Technology Student Association Club at the high school, as well as the Pennsylvania Governor STEM Competition Team. And so this year, as Dr. Alcarro said, we had a really good year. The Pennsylvania Governor STEM Competition Team, for the second consecutive year and for the second time since we've been doing it, made it to the final round, which is, basically, they select 20 teams from the state. This year was, that was from over 75 other competitive teams. And so we were one of 10 from the second division, which means that we were kids that primarily did not compete in the previous year. So we got invited to speak once again in Harrisburg at the final round. And the kids did a great job. This year's project was based on circadian rhythms and trying to develop an app and a piece of technology that would detect your exposure to blue light and then sync that up with an app, like a health metrics app, that would help to improve your, your sleep schedule. So we won. We did not win the competition like we did last year. We were grand champions last year. But this year, we got first place in a special category for best medical device. And we were able, the kids were able to collaborate with some nonprofits locally and get a really good experience. So that's always one that I'm really proud of the kids for, everything they, they come up with, you know, throughout the year in my classes. But that's one that those five kids always put a lot of extra effort into it. And so I really appreciate all the support that I, that we get from you guys every year to be able to travel to those competitions and do the things that we do for that. And then the Technology Student Association, we rostered 44 kids this year. Thirty-five of them actually traveled to the competition and got their stuff done, basically, to be able to travel to the competition. And out of that, 18 of them qualified for the state-level competition. And we didn't have as successful of a year as we would hope to. Our best finish at the state-level competition was a fourth place. But again, that, you know, the kids that do that, in my eyes, are some of the best kids that we have here because they put in the extra effort to do something academic. It's something that's completely out of class that they're putting in their time and effort for. And a lot of them are athletes. They're in the plays. They're doing other things. They have jobs. And they also carve out time for this. So I'm always really proud of the work that they do, whether or not we bring home hardware from that competition or not. So again, I just want to thank the board and for your support and everybody that's involved with supporting our clubs and supporting those kids and getting us where we need to be. So thank you for recognizing us. Thanks for giving us some time, and thanks for having us here.
And that's it for my portion of this show.
All right, moving on to public comments on agenda items. No one has signed up, but would anyone from the audience like to speak? All right, we will not be amending the agenda tonight. So that's going to move us right into committees, starting with Dr. Battler, Education Committee.
Thank you, Dr. Mel. Up first, it's recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the contract, which is attached, for the scope of work. The plan includes three phases, one, two, and three, and the total cost is $59,816.90. The cost for this project will be covered by Esser Funds, which were specifically designated for consulting purposes.
So if I could just jump in, we do have Deva Par here with us tonight. We have Chris Selmer, Sue Snead, and we have Cindy Merzaski, who was a couple of years ago here with us here in Exeter. So she's a familiar face. We did reach out to Deva Par and ask them to partner with us to look at our high school schedule. Our high school schedule has not looked, has not been looked at in probably, I would say, close to 20 years, which has been a long time. And with the Esser Funds that we have remaining, they have to be used for consulting purposes. So we believed as an administrative team, this was one of the best expenditures that we can make using these funds to take the time to dig into this schedule, look at the efficiency of the schedule, and also ensure that we're really truly meeting the needs of our students. We've added a lot of courses over the years. Expectations for students are very different than what they were 20-plus years ago. The state is looking at adding a personal finance course, and, you know, how are we going to do this? So again, partnering with Deva Par seemed to be the most logical choice for our team to really dig into this schedule and see if it was running efficiently or if we needed to change things up. We did meet with, as an administrative team, with them. It was myself, Dawn Harris, Tom Campbell, and Josh Hoyt to go over what we believed were our priorities in the scope of work that was attached to the agenda tonight. And they're here this evening to kind of really share with the board what this is going to look like over the three phases and share, answer any questions that you may have. So I'm going to invite them up to the podium.
My colleagues, please join me. Join me. Thank you, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. As Dr. Howler said, we're Deva Par Consulting. Just to give you a quick background, I don't know if you've heard of us. We're about two years old in August, and we're a consulting firm out of Lititz, Pennsylvania. There's about 18 of us now, and we have been growing rapidly across the state of Pennsylvania. We're also certified to do consulting in the state of Delaware and South Carolina as well. We have about 20 active projects now, I would say, across, all across Pennsylvania at this point. The power that we believe of our model is, we have a very diverse team. We have, and the model was really based on what was happening in education. There's been a lot of turnover, as you all know, as board members. There's been a lot of gaps out there, and we felt like we could provide a consulting firm to kind of get into the weeds and really help navigate many situations. In Berks County alone, we're working in four districts here in Berks County, doing a variety of different consulting tasks, including schedule analysis with one of those clients here in Berks County. So the primary consulting team would be the three of us, and that's why we're here tonight. Again, I'm Chris Selmer, Dr. Sue Sneath, and you know Dr. Cindy, as we affectionately call her, Merzeski. So we would be the consulting, the primary consulting team. But again, if you go to our website, you'll see our consultants, you'll see our services. Everything is out there, as well as our backgrounds and experiences. The three of us are also the same team that's working with the, another district in Berks County on their scheduling project as well. In the proposal, on page two, you're going to see a work plan and deliverables. And the one piece I really want to stress about this, and we collaborated with the administration, they really fine-tuned the proposal because every district's a little bit different. We have to make sure we hit the mark for this community. And our process is built upon, first and foremost, feedback. And you see that built in the proposal. There's going to be interviews with key administrative personnel, operations personnel, and then we'll also facilitate and conduct stakeholder groups throughout the community, including the board. The feedback is critical. Students as well will also be part of those feedback groups. To make a change like this, or even to think about making a change like this, in our opinion, there has to be a process. And that's the process of communication, of collaboration, and then ultimately of results, and sharing potential options of what the high school schedule could look like in the future. At that same time, we're going to look at the facilities, the configuration, obviously space, how it's utilized. All plays in to how the school operates and how the schedule operates, both for staff and students. Again, if you turn to page three, more feedback with educators, parent and guardians, and community partners. So again, we met with the administrative team, made some adjustments to this based on feedback of what they felt would be best for, you know, the community here in Exeter. At that last step of Phase One, we would do a data presentation and a written report, which we give to Dr. Howler and her team, so they can really get a sense of the feedback that's being received. And that really will springboard us in the Phase Two of the proposal, which is planned development and project management. At this point... Both operationally, schedule, financially. We are going to take all those pieces into one comprehensive review and then come out with some potential options for consideration. I'd like to see if my colleagues have anything to add to... Go ahead, please.
I think Mr. Sommer did a bang-up job, but I am going to say that one of the things that we've learned along the way is the, the impact and the importance of looking at all of the different departments in a school district consistently and its impact on teaching and learning. So you can see through this plan that we've worked very hard in the last several years to look at overall impact of any kind of academic change on facility, on operations, and all of the other departments that we list there. But the other piece is that the world is changing really quickly. And if you say that we haven't really taken a good look at a master schedule at a high school or really the structure of a high school in a lot of years, it really is a very forward-thinking to take a year to do that and to really prepare our students for what they may be facing or what they need for the future. So we are very grateful to even have the opportunity to meet with you tonight. And if you have any questions, please share.
I, I have one question, I guess, directed to, to one of you up there. With, with the passage of Act 56 and the option of the 180 days of the, you know, secondary, we're talking about 990 hours, does that play a part in any of the options that you're going to be looking at when we present?
I am going to tell you. So I, I served as the Chief Academic Officer in Harrisburg School District. And one of the things that was needed in that school district, especially directly after COVID, when there were so many teacher vacancies, is a look at master scheduling. One of the things that we were able to accomplish is we looked at models from around the world to determine how countries that are successful in their educational frameworks, how are they doing it? So we looked at Estonia, Canada, Japan, Singapore. And we created a middle school with a, it's, it's called a, it's Teach Less, Learn More model, where we had so many emergency-certified teachers in this one building that we knew that we needed to provide daily bite-sized professional development for those teachers in order for those students to be successful. So before the legislation changed, we were figuring out a way to compact the day, send kids home a little early to make sure that we had an hour of PD on every single day so that we could better serve students. We might have had fewer instructional minutes than other middle schools, but our instructional minutes, the quality was so much different and so much stronger. Since then, the, the law has changed, and I think that opens a lot of opportunities for different ways of thinking. What I see are people kind of gravitating back to the traditional and still looking at 180, still looking at 300, you know, 990 minutes. And I, I think anything's on the table when we have legislation to back that up. But we have to do what's best for our students to do the very best they possibly can and to offer them the best we can. So I do think it has an impact on what we might find.
Okay, thank you.
It's interesting you mention that, because we were just talking about this two weeks ago with another client. And when the 180, 990 happened, if you Google it, you're going to see four-day work weeks. Four-day work weeks, four-day work weeks. Where we see it is what Sue just said, an opportunity to reimagine and potentially deliver instruction differently. That's to us what that legislation potentially opens up. It's not about four-day, I'll just say, it's not about four-day work week.
Yeah.
So, so it's interesting you raise that question because it's come up.
Yeah, and, and that's exactly where I'm coming from, too. I definitely don't see it as a four-day school week. I don't think it's practical, at least in terms of, you know, parents being able to be there on whatever day that would be of the week, Friday or whatever, to, to be able to supervise their child. So I don't know how practical that would be to be, have a four-day school week. But yeah, I was more curious around what other opportunities that would open up, like you mentioned. So, thank you.
I have one question. I see that you have student representation on here as part of your model. I would wonder if maybe Mr. Campbell and you guys would welcome including representation from our students that are on campus part-time.
Oh, I love that you mentioned that. For the students who go to the...
BCTC or have internship programs.
Yeah. When we schedule the, we will be very, very careful to make sure there's a cross-representation of all, all students. Students that are, you know, probably very busy with athletes, students that need more assistance and have intervention, students who attend the Career and Tech Center. Those are the kinds of things we really want to hear. We're very structured in the way we present these interviews. They're focused. They're very, very structured focus groups. So what we try to do through that whole process is just pull all the trends. What are the trends? What are multiple stakeholder groups saying? And how does this, this impact the way the school should be structured or could be structured? So yes, we would include everybody that we could.
Thank you.
Will you be using any sort of software to, with the data? Or is the data just being, once you receive the data, it's between the U3, how you interpret the data and then move forward with that?
Honestly, the, the process that we're using right now is more, it's called phenomenological, where we pull out the themes that we hear multiple times. We might even show a chart of how many times this is mentioned, how many times this is mentioned, just so that you can start to see the trends from various stakeholders. And no, we don't use software. It's more of a qualitative analysis so that we can kind of give it from the humanistic perspective, but with some quantifying of the structure of the, the interviews. They'll all be sort of merged together.
I've got a couple of questions. How did you arrive at the cost estimates for each of the phases?
That's a really good question.
Sure. So the cost estimates are based on the amount of hours we, we believe each phase will take. We have a rate range that we use, and that's how we came up with, with that. So for the first phase, we had approximately 118 hours. For Phase Two, approximately 105. And then Phase Three, I believe, was like 170, 71 hours. So that was the basis of how we, we built the, the costs for the proposal.
You were just to divide the...
Yeah, it would be around...
...by the hours?
Yeah, it'd be around between 140 and 145 an hour is the hourly. Yep, that's the hourly rate.
Another question. How many of these schedule analyses have you completed?
Sure. Between the three of us, let's...
No, I'm talking as Deva Par.
Oh, as Deva Par. We have Steelton.
Three.
Three.
At this point, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think, yes.
In two years. Yeah, well, I, one and a half for me. I left Harrisburg in February of 2023.
So would there be any way we could get a report from those three with the, with all names redacted so that we maintain privacy?
What I can give you is, I could give you like a sample of the different schedule types that arose. When I was working at the one school district in Dauphin County, we didn't do the, we did the, I did the process as a consultant for their leadership team, but I didn't do it as structured as we're planning to do it for you. We're in process of doing this... We're in process of doing this same, well, similar, not exactly the same, but a similar process in another school district in Berks County right now. So we were in process. And we can share with you things like the questions that we use, why we use them, those kinds of things, those tools that we're using for it.
That'd be great.
But, you know, I can share a variety. So some of it's hard because each context is so different. So the one district was a seven through 12 building and their, their goals were to make the middle school feel like a middle school and the high school feel like a high school. And how do you do that? How do you share staff in that setting? So we have all different kinds of processes and different kinds of scheduling that arise from collecting all that feedback.
So just to be clear, as Devopar, in the last two years, you've done three of these?
Yes.
Okay. And finally, how will you incorporate artificial intelligence into your, not just into your work, but into whatever product you may produce for us? How will it be, how will teachers use it? How will students use it? How can administrators use it?
In my thinking with AI, and we really have been making sure that we're staying up to date with what's happening, there's a lot happening with AI in education. We want to be really careful about talking about AI from the programmatic standpoint because every, every place is different. I kind of think about AI as it's here and we shouldn't be figuring out how to beat it, but how to use it to our benefit, not just in completing tasks, but teaching students that their input is what is output in an AI situation. So we do have somebody who oversees as a director of technology who works very closely with AI, creating a lot of AI policy for school districts, ways for school districts to think about it. I don't know if it would have a place here because I don't know, we're not really looking at program per se. If you ask us to look deeper into that, we definitely have the talent to be able to do that. But it's something that's here and something that most places aren't quite talking about yet, in so much as what do we do about it? What we're, what we're hearing more is we're frustrated by it. But it's kind of like cell phones 20 years ago. You know, we used to say, we're going to ban the cell phones. Well, cell phones are here, so how do we not make that same mistake of that fight that we had with cell phones with AI? Let's do it in a smarter, more thoughtful way.
The president of Microsoft calls AI a tantamount to the development of the printing press in the 15th century.
Changes, it's life changing. It's life changing and it, and you wonder, you know, you wonder, do we change our teachers and how we're assessing students? Or do we put parameters where it's appropriate for students to use AI in some places, to use it cautiously in other places and not to use it? And just really kind of make it clear and teach them from the beginning? It's just a matter of what this community would want, but it's here. And, you know, we'll use it as we can, but yeah, that's where we are.
Thank you.
Sure.
I just have one more question for Dr. Haller, actually. As we turn to the district, you know, I've said before that consultants are only as good as if we use the data and we use the suggestion. So provided that they provide us this information, you're happy with it, your team feels as though they want to implement it, what do you see as your timeframe to go live within the district? I assume it would have to be beginning of the school year start, but I don't do this. And then the other thing is they're giving us qualitative data. How do we quantify what our goals is from that data? Is it time? Is it student options? Is it academic performance? What does all this equate to once they give us the information?
So that is a loaded question.
I know, sorry.
So I'm going to start with.
You could use AI to answer it potentially.
Can I Google that? So to start with the timeframe, we specifically wanted to have this be spread out. We didn't want to rush the process. The reason why we felt we didn't want to rush the process is because this process hasn't been done here in a very long time. And so we've never really dug in to this, to this schedule in, I couldn't tell you when. So we really wanted to take our time with this and really have a lot of opportunity to have the teachers have voice in this, have our administrators, you know, have, really be part of it, and then really see what this report generates. Our focus in the district, having worked with the IU this whole, last year with the cycle of school improvement, is clearly academic achievement. That is our goal. We're a school and we're going to really focus on making sure that our students are achieving at high levels. But how do you, how do you do that? And time is one of the most valuable things that we have when you're working with students. So how do you maximize that? So we also want to look at the efficiency of the schedule. We offer a lot of courses, we offer a lot of electives, and are the electives strictly tied to the fact of this, the structure of the course, of the way the schedule runs and not really to the benefit of our students academically and where they see themselves going, whether that's the college track or military or into the workforce or into a trade. So I think we need to really be thoughtful about that. Then you have the very practical piece of this is what can, what can we do with this information? So if this comes back to us and they say, well, to get the Cadillac version of the schedule, guess what, Exeter, you're going to have, you have to add X number of teachers, then that is the recommendation. And then I recommend them, I'm going to come back to the board and say, here this is, is this something that we are willing to support? Or what are the other options within, within this conversation? I don't know that that's going to be the outcome. The outcome certainly could be because of the structure of the schedule, you might have too many teachers that you're not using efficiently. And we need to look at their certs and move people around and pull somebody out of the social studies department that has an English cert and have them solely be in the English department. Or hey, you know what, your numbers are really low in this course offering and has been over the last five years. This is not a course that's relevant anymore. You really don't want to offer it anymore. But what does that do to the structure of other things? Or you really need a prerequisite for this course and, or your prerequisite isn't, you know, there could be a host of things that come out of this. That's why we ultimately wanted to have this be a longer process. Now, I, I see this as a former building principal, is this is only as good as how the teachers accept and embrace it. So that professional development piece, in my opinion, is critically important to the success of whatever comes out of this conversation. And so I'm not sure that, you know, when we look at this and look at Tom's timeframe for when the next soaring eagle comes out, if, you know, it's going to be like, okay, well, we're going to do professional development while we're also changing the schedule, like that might not be the solution. The solution might be that we are doing professional development on the schedule and the schedule doesn't go into play till the following year. So I, I think we just need to start the process and my recommendation is to do this process and then pull the data and then see where we're at because we, we just really don't even know at this point what we're dealing with. And it could be that we have a great schedule. That could be what comes out of this. You have a great schedule, we don't recommend any changes. Here are sweeping changes, here are a few tweaks. That, that could be what comes out of this. So I think we need the process to start, but the focus is academics. That is the focus.
Thank you.
I also have a question for you, Dr. Haller, if I could refer to a recent set of minutes. You were talking about this, the schedule is not a block or traditional schedule, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It has been discussed in the past that the schedule be reviewed to see if it is functioning the best it can for the students to meet their academic needs. What concerns me about that sentence, and I'm assuming it's right because we approved the minutes. If we discussed it in the past, do you have a sense of how many times or when, and we're only doing it now? I'm puzzled.
So, I mean, I, I've been the superintendent for two years. The previous superintendent did bring this up as a next step at looking at the schedule, but obviously was not able to continue with that process. And so it has been brought up in the past, she just wasn't able to get that done during her tenure here. But there is a belief among the administration that that was something that needed to be done. And when we were looking at the ESER funds that we had remaining and we were looking at the priorities that we have as a, as a district, scheduling is something that is coming up. And that's why we believe that this is the best and most appropriate time to move forward with looking at that schedule. And it's, it's kind of the perfect, it's kind of the perfect time to do it right now because we do have the funds available, we can only use them for consulting. So I don't know when we're going to have this type of funding available in the future. We did have the change at, at P D E with the calendar, so that opens up other opportunities for us and really allows us to be more creative with the schedule that we might not have been able to do in the past. And there's also a recommendation from P D E that all of our students eventually take a personal finance course. And they, that, that conversation hasn't really moved forward, but it hasn't gone back yet. So as far as we are aware, at some point, our students will be taking a personal finance course, and we just don't know how that's going to look. You know, do you teach it, do your social studies teachers teach it? Can your math, is it your math teachers that teach it? Is it your fax teachers that teach it? Do we have, because people will automatically assume that it's your, your business department. Well, we have a business department of two. So for all of our students to have that course, how are we going to do that without hiring someone else in the business, in the business department? But we could look at other staffing options. So with those three things, having the funds to be able to do this and really do it right, knowing that the calendar has changed and that can open up interesting opportunities for our students, as well as this personal finance course, it just really, this, this, it just really all came together that this was the time that we needed to do it.
Okay, that, that's fine, but I guess the phrase that was concerning me was this nebulous in the past. I mean, have we been discussing this for 20 years or is it just the last three or four?
I mean, Dr. Minor only left two years ago, so, I mean, she brought that up, so I would say maybe three, four years ago that Dr. Minor brought it up as an area we should look at. And then in, in now being in this role and having contact with Tom Campbell as his, you know, boss essentially, and really look at programming K through 12 and looking at student data K through 12, it's something that as an administration you do talk about. We've looked at our K four schedules a couple of times. We revamped the five, six schedule last year. Alex Brown, our junior high principal, is looking at revising our junior high schedule that was already done and they moved away from a similar schedule that they had at the high school, which was a block and a strip. When Dr. Minor was here, she did change that with Dr. Flam. It wasn't working the way that we felt it could work best. So Alex took a look at it again this year. And the only schedule that we hadn't looked at was the high school schedule. And that is our biggest schedule that impacts our most students. So again, it just, at this point, made sense that that is something that we really should be looking at.
Okay, thank you.
I have one other comment or question for administration. On one of this actual item on the agenda, when it goes to vote, how is this going to be structured? Because really, when the board would go to vote for this, we're really only want to authorize phases one and two, not phase three, because I'm imagining phase three is only if we want to move forward with whatever option it is that we like, right? So when we go to the voting meeting with this, are we wording it in such a way where we're just approving phase one and two and then later on would be phase three for approval?
So I would defer to Sharon on this. The only issue that I see coming up is that the ESER funds have to be spent by September 30th.
And you want to, and you want to lock in the contract.
Right.
Terms so that not to exceed. I think you could, you could do a resolution or a motion so that it's the first, the entire contract is approved, but subject to, you know, some provision where you're, you're actually authorizing the third phase when the time comes.
Okay. And, but.
So you could, you could, you could not move forward, you'd have the option to not move forward with phase three, but it is approved unless you decide not to move forward.
So we would have to have a resolution drafted for the voting meeting in order to, to do that?
Yeah, or a motion, the proper motion to allow for that, yeah.
Or a proper motion, okay.
And I would find it very, very hard to believe that there won't be some recommended changes coming out of this process because of how long it's been since we looked at the schedule. And with that, you're going to want to make sure that you have that piece because it is going to impact definitely food services, the way you do your lunches, that's a, you would, you would be surprised of how much of an impact that has on, on things you have to feed kids. Plus our students who go to B C T C, we need to make sure that they're still meeting their require, their academic requirements. So I, I would find it really hard to believe that once we get through phases one and two, there's not going to be recommendations that are going to come out of it in some way.
Does the, more of a question for Devopar, does the phase three cost, is that variable at all based on the impact level of whatever option we choose?
So that's a good question. And generally, we wrote phase three a little differently because of the ESER component to this and knowing there's a timing. If you, if you notice though, phase three would start, let me make sure I have my, Sue, did you take my? January, I believe. I just want to make sure I quoted. January, yes. And that's, I just want to make sure, so January.
It would start.
So the thought was with, with ESER, you have 90 days to liquidate. So the thought by January was by November, December, we would know then at that point what, what would be next. If we need to write some language in there to kind of, you know, make sure there's some, some variable in that, that cost to make sure it's flexible, we're willing to do that. Normally, that's how we would do it and we'd probably just do an hourly rate, quite honestly, for phase three, but because of the ESER component, knowing the timing, we wrote that phase three a little differently, made some assumptions on, you know, if we are going to implement P D between the three of us. But if there's another way for phase three that we would want to structure, we're definitely open to that dialogue, you know, before the next meeting. So, but the ESER part was the little bit of the complicating factor for phase three of the timing.
Could we change it to hourly?
I, it sounds like.
I think you have to commit the, the amount of ESER funds that you want to commit to.
The problem is with ESER needs to know the amount ahead of time.
So we can't do an assumption based on an hourly rate?
I think that's maybe what this is.
I think that's what they're doing.
That's what we did.
I think what, how you, how you can spend that money that you're, you're contracting for is through the different implementation services that they can provide.
So I guess kind of the, going back to that question, if we, if we say we're pseudo committed to phase three for whatever that amount would be, 25,000 or so, and it ends up not costing that much, how does that, how does that get rectified? I guess, is that a credit then that's?
It could absolutely be a credit. I think then from an accounting perspective, with the ESER piece, I don't know if that causes a potential predicament.
Okay.
I'm sure the government would take their money back.
Sure.
We'll be changing the scope somewhere because I don't want to give money back.
No. Okay. It sounds like something we'd have to work out, though.
Yeah.
Before we take it to vote, so.
Yeah, and we're willing to be a partner and we understand the sensitivity and the timing with ESER and especially now it's at the end. We, all three of us had dealt with ESER a lot the last couple of years, so.
Yeah.
We're willing to work to figure it out.
Is anyone on the board have any objections to administration and the solicitor working through either a resolution or some kind of terms to, for, ahead of the voting meeting for this? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for having us. Appreciate it.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
Dr. Battler, take us away. Dr. Battler, take us away.
All right. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following list of staff conferences. There is currently one listed. Any questions? No. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following field trips beyond the 60-mile radius. There are two currently listed. Any discussion or questions regarding those? No. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the Statement of Work Agreement between Exeter Township School District and the BCIU to provide professional development for a half-day to all K through 12 staff gifted teachers on August 7, 2024. The cost is $450 to be paid through ESER funding. There's no discussion. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve a memorandum of understanding, MOU, between the Berks County Intermediate Unit and the Exeter Township School District to coordinate the efforts between the BCIU's Head Start program and the Exeter's Title programs. That is listed below. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the purchase of AP Language and Composition textbooks for the 2024-2025 school year. These textbooks are budgeted items in the senior high school budget. I have them right here. The total cost is $6780.60. And I was just looking through a little bit of these. What made us go with this particular, this particular language book?
So this was a process that was done through the Language Arts Department. The teacher that teaches the AP course, they vetted a number of resources, and that's the one that they chose to go with.
Okay, so just going through it a little bit, I mean, obviously not a lot. There's a lot of things in here that are quite controversial. I didn't know if this is something that was discussed. For example, there's not a, usually when I see a Language and Composition book, when they're discussing classical discussions or being able to go through a debate, they will show two sides of a story, two sides of a discussion, of course, and then they will debate them. In this book, it's all one-sided. Is there any particular reason for that?
Well, the book isn't the curriculum, it's just the resource. So they use a number of different ways that they teach via the curriculum. So the teachers recognize that books are not the sole source of how we teach things. So, you know, I don't think that any teachers here teach directly from the textbook, per se, so.
In that case, why do we need the text, this particular textbooks, textbook?
Well, we want the students to be able to resource, be able to go home if they do want to read more. And there are portions of all our textbooks where they use the content within class, so.
But in this case, they're only getting one side of the story. That's my only concern. If anybody else would like to take a look at it, you're more than welcome to. Of course, I'll pass it around. But that's my only concern with this particular book. When it talks about, for example, it's separated into different sections. It has a section on, for example, environment. It only discusses climate change. It has a discussion on Latinos. It has a discussion on Black Americans or different color, different races. It has a discussion, which is called identity. It has a discussion on money, which is quite anti-capitalism, which kind of surprised me considering we're in the United States of America. It has quite a few discussions in here that I'm not sure I would be, I would personally be okay with just my child reading. I'm okay with them understanding this and that this is one side of a story. But I would not be okay with this being the only thing that was taught in my child's language of composition. I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
And just for context purposes, there is a rubric attached to the agenda which outlines the reviews of the teachers and the AP books for more information. So it looks like it meets all the criteria that's required for the course, and this is selection by the teachers, so.
You're correct. I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that first. Thank you, Julia.
Part of this course is, it is a writing course, so it's argumentative. It is a dual enrollment course as well. So it's, the piece about teaching the students about persuasive writing and argumentative writing gives kids two different perspectives or multiple perspectives to debate things from, so.
And I completely agree with you with the perspectives. It's just that this particular book only gives one perspective on each particular topic.
Is there any other discussion from the board?
Great job with shipping costs. I like that.
That is also a reduction. An original shipping quote was $326, so I did get them to knock it down to $240.
I don't think I've seen less than 5% yet on textbooks since I've been on the board, Josh. So whatever you're doing, keep doing it.
Okay, next up for discussion, a settlement agreement and release between the parents individually on their own behalf and on behalf of their minor child, student 89232, excuse me, 8932324, as proposed, and further authorizes the Board President and Board Secretary to execute the settlement agreement and release on behalf of the district. Next, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves tuition agreements between the Vista School and the Exeter Township School District to provide extended school year services for students 8942324 and 8952324 for the period July 8, 2024 through August 9, 2024, at a total cost of $18,406.92. It is recommended that this Board of School Directors approve a tuition agreement between Bucksmont Academy and the Exeter Township School District to provide educational placement slots for the 2024-2025 school year at a total cost of $200, excuse me, $20898. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the attached 2023-2024 and 2024-25 school year consulting agreement with Neurodiversity Consultants LLC to provide services for students 8872324 and 8882324, as detailed in the attached rate schedule. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves a tuition agreement between New Story Y and Missing Campus and the Exeter Township School District to provide extended year school service for student 8962324 for the period June 20, 2024 through July 26, 2024, at the cost of $425 per day for a total cost of approximately $10,625. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves a tuition agreement between New Story Y and Missing Campus. Did I just read that one? I'm so sorry, everybody. I know. Is there, oh, no, there is two of those. Thank you, I'm sorry, it was the same amount. So I was like, whoa. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves a tuition agreement between New Story Y and Missing Campus and the Exeter Township School District to provide extended school year services for student 8972324 for the period June 20, 2024 through July 26, 2024, at the cost of $425 per day for a total cost of approximately $10,625. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves an agreement between Lakeside Youth Services and Exeter Township School District to provide one full-time and .6 part-time Lakeside in-school counselors, a total of 1.6, for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025, at a cost of $148,250.
May I speak on that one, Dr. Battler?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out that there is a slight reduction in this contract for the upcoming year. The main reason I wanted to point it out, though, is just to give a shout out to the reason why there's a reduction in this contract. If you recall, this was a much bigger contract two years ago, and the board agreed to add an additional social worker position to the bargaining unit. The young lady who's been in that position for this past year, you hired her as Emily Zimmerman, she's now Emily Dreese, came to us in the spring and said, "Now that I've been in this position for a year and I have a better understanding of what student needs are, I think I can do more." So we worked with Mrs. Leonard and the team to look at her schedule for next year. And Emily was able to incorporate more services into her schedule with some support from the scheduling standpoint. And thus, we've been able to reduce this contract. So that's just a shout out to Emily Dreese for being such a great addition to our team.
And finally, for me, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves a tuition agreement between Kids Peace National Centers Incorporated and the Exeter Township School District to provide extended school year services for students, excuse me, student 8982324 for the period July 1, 2024 through August 13, 2024, at the cost of $90 per day for a total cost of $2,700. For the voting agenda, we'll be moving on A, all of them, A through N. Sorry, nothing's left out this time.
All right.
I know, right?
Yeah.
And that is all for my education.
Thank you, Dr. Battler. Mr. Morgan, Finance and Audit Committee.
I'm Kevin. All right. All right, 2024-25 Final General Fund Budget. Recommended the School Board of Directors adopt the final general fund budget for the 24-25 school year amounting in $85,812,436 per the attached resolution. And is available, and it's been posted, and the general fund budget will be voted on at the June 12 meeting.
If I could just share with everyone, and Brian can add more information to this. Today, we received information about our title allotment that we received from the federal government, and it was actually decreased by $40,000. And again, as I've shared with the board over the last two years of going through the budget process, this is the difficulty that school administrations and business administrators have when crafting a budget because we're building a budget based on assumptions. And the assumption made for title funds was that that funding would remain at the same level that we had this year. The cut for the allotment was specific to staffing. So a lot of the funds that we use are to offset costs associated with staffing with teachers, reading specialists. So the cushion that the district has, and I say cushion, is now reduced by $40,000. So we just, you know, we felt that that was critically important, that the board be made aware of that. And again, you know, timing's everything. And it would have been really helpful if they would have let us know this prior to us getting to this point in the budget. And I did ask Brian some questions about how this happened, why it happened. And so I'll let Brian speak to that.
Actually, the state just didn't cut us. The state was decreased by $30 million from the federal government in the allotment based on new census data. So that means we had less poverty than other places that will get it. So it's, you know, it was $30 million decrease to the state, and then the allocation through all the districts. And the state are receiving less. So our share, the decrease was $40,000. And like Dr. Holler said, we had a cushion of about $167,000. Now we have a cushion of about $127,000.
Mr. Feick, does that also take into account population drop in the state of Pennsylvania?
Title is based on poverty levels. So it's based on whatever the poverty levels are in the state. And then the state bases on the poverty levels of their school districts. So there's probably population drop in there somewhere, but it's really based on the poverty levels. And I mean, Josh can probably add more if he wants.
Yeah, so they, based upon it, some of it's based upon the census information that's put into there. But I mean, it's, the timetables of when we get that information doesn't always jive for when we really need this information for budgeting purposes within here. So for our Title I, we use that funding to, for a lot of our reading specialist intervention specialists. So we saw a reduction in $30,000 there. And then our Title II funding, which is what we use for classroom reduction, we saw a $10,000 decrease into there. So it's unfortunate, but we're going to take a look at things. I just want everybody to be aware, if you have not studied demographics or anything like that, if Pennsylvania is the fourth largest decline of population moving to other states behind New York, California, and Illinois. So I don't think this is a, the reason why I asked the question about population, obviously, there's less population. Then those demos on the poverty level changes. And I think it's going to continue to be a decline to the budgets, to the school districts.
And the tax structure in Pennsylvania is such that the majority of school taxes or the money that comes to support schools comes directly from the community. And our index is 7.1%. So that allows school boards to tax to that amount. We're coming in at a 3.25 tax increase. But technically, you could have gone as high as 7.1% to fund schools. And we've worked incredibly hard to make sure that we kept this increase at a minimum. So, you know, $40,000 is a hit, especially because we use it for staffing purposes.
I do have one question for administration on this. It has always been a pet peeve of mine when it comes to voting that the budget and the tax millage are two separate votes. Is there a reason that we have to do that or required by law to do that? And the only reason I ask is because I don't know why someone would vote yes to the budget but no to the tax increase because the tax increase is what's specified in the budget to get the revenue.
You have to do a resolution for the taxes. It actually has to be two separate because you have to have a roll call vote for the budget and a resolution for the taxes, so. But they are tied together. If you don't approve the one, you can't approve the other. So you have to basically approve the budget first. It has a tax increase in it. And then approve the tax increase to fund the budget.
So if somebody said yes to the budget but no to the tax increase, that's okay?
You can't tell people how to vote.
Well, no, I understand.
I'm sorry, I'm blunt, yeah, it's okay.
No, I understand that, I understand that. But I just mean that it doesn't make any sense, though, to do that. Okay, all right. Well, I was just curious. I didn't know if there was a reason we had to keep them separate.
And I would say effectively, if you flipped the two, then you have not, in fact, actually, even though you voted, you have not, in fact, approved your budget. So, and then you wind up in court.
I have a question, only because I'm not a finance person. Where is the 3.25% tax increase listed in these two documents? I'm just not seeing it.
That's your B, subject B in the millage and the resolution.
I think he's looking for the actual percentage to be stated here.
Where's that number?
In the, guys, in the budget document.
They don't, the state doesn't actually go by the percent increase. They want the actual millage.
Sure, I understand. But just to be complete, and so the public knows what we're doing and how much, it seems to me that 3.25% ought to be in here somewhere.
You could always put that in parentheses in the motion if you want.
That'd be great.
On page 12.
But it's the millage that's more important.
It's on page, yeah, Mrs. Schaefer pointed out.
It's in your budget book, though. It shows, you know, the percentage increase in the budget book.
In that document on page 12, it is listed 3.25% change in real estate tax. And it shows it goes from 34.7098 to 35.8378.
I'm sorry, where is that?
It's in the budget book, page 12. The PD 2028, which is a state form that you have to pass the budget under.
Mr. Friller, it's the first attachment in Item A where it says 2024-25 Final General Fund Budget. Mr. Friller, it's the first attachment in Item A where it says 2024-25 Final General Budget, General Fund Budget PDF. So it's the first attachment.
Is that included here in our agenda?
It's in the agenda.
Yeah, it's the first attachment.
Yeah, in the agenda.
Top attachment on that.
And then the second one's the resolution.
Oh, okay.
So if you open the first attachment, you can scroll down to page 12.
Okay, I don't want to take up time, I'll find it, thank you.
Any other questions about the budget? Okay, moving on, Real Estate Millage. Recommend the Board of School Directors approves the 2425 Real Estate Millage as attached. For your records, that Real Estate Millage is 35.8378 mills. I believe this is what Mr. Mel was referring to, that this will be the second vote. So the first one will be to approve the budget, the second one will be a resolution to approve the millage. Any questions? All right, moving on. Homestead Farmstead Exclusion, tongue twister. It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves the 2425 Homestead and Farmstead Exclusion Resolution authorizing real estate tax assessment reductions for the school year beginning July 1st, '24 for the attached resolution. This is subject to the final tax resolution, of course.
That's correct, and that amount for residential properties that qualify is $313.40, which will reduce our tax bill by that amount.
And I believe we posted something on the website referring directly on directions and how you could get more information on that, correct?
And our secretarial staff, I'm not sure if they've started or they've completed or in process, are reaching out to local community churches to ask if we could put pamphlets and paper copies of the applications in churches. So that way for our community members who might not feel comfortable coming to the administration building to get it, they can access it at their church, local church.
I haven't had time, is it, I haven't had time to look, is it a banner on the website? Is it easy to find?
It's not a banner.
Okay, so you have to go into?
Yeah, you'd have to go, you'd have to.
Okay, perfect.
Mr. Morgan, I did email our tax collector the information and asked her to help spread the news as well to our community.
Perfect, and we saw the pamphlet, it's nicely done, yeah, it looks great. All right, there's no questions, moving on to per capita. It's recommended the Board of School Directors approve the 2425 per capita tax for the 2425 school year for the attached resolution. Mr. Feig, did you have anything to add to that?
There's no change from the previous year, or the previous year before that.
Perfect, I'm just looking through the actual per capita amount.
Sorry, Mr. Morgan, I need to interrupt you for some late breaking news. Exeter volleyball has won the, it's their first round in the state game. Thank you, sorry.
I feel like there should have been some kind of a, you could use your beeper or something. That's great, congratulations to the volleyball team. Just remind me, does this price differ per household, is it per capita?
No, it's per household unless your assessment is less than the 8700, was it?
Okay. Anybody have any questions on that?
I have, I do have a few questions on the per capita, sorry, I was.
That's your second breakthrough of the night, just so you know.
Yes, sorry, yes, another late, late breaking news here. So every year, it seems like we get a multitude of people that get annoyed because they have a recovery service that's, for whatever reason, there maybe they didn't see the per capita tax and never received it. I'm not exactly sure the reason, but we always seem to get a cluster of people around that time when they're getting recovery notices to, you know, reclaim the, what is it, the $5?
Well, $10.
$10?
$9.80 if they pay it before.
Okay. The, you know, I guess the question I have is, is it, there's two questions. Are we paying any additional cost to the recovery agency to go after the, or are they collecting any portion of that bill?
They collect the full amount plus fees, we get our principal amount.
Okay, and then are we paying any, is the district paying anything to the tax collectors of the borough or the township?
The tax collectors get the same amount of per bills they do for real estate. I think that's, is it 2 or 250, I gotta look at the last resolution.
But we are paying a per bill rate for per capita?
Not per bill, per collection.
Per collection of per capita?
Correct.
Okay, so I guess I'm, I'm just wondering, wouldn't it make more sense economically to, for us to consider eliminating the per capita tax? And obviously, we would need to make up the difference there.
About 120,000.
120,000.
Minus about 25,000 of commissions for the tax collectors, yeah.
Okay. To actually fold that up into the real estate tax. Or I guess I'm looking to you to tell me why we should keep this, why we should keep the per capita.
I feel it's a nuisance tax, but we're gonna make it up from. Yeah.
I agree with you on that.
We talked about this two years ago, it's, we need to bring it into the budget discussions, but it's like, where are you gonna make up the loss of revenue?
Well, we're essentially paying, like you said, 25,000 extra just for the processing of these bills that go out.
It's still that 90-some thousand we're taking in, yeah.
I mean, it would have to be made up in the real estate tax.
Yeah.
I just went, obviously, we're a little late to the game to do it this year, but.
I hate to say it, but history on the per capita of the 511 taxes, it used to be that the only thing you have is real estate, which is property owners. Where per capita also gets the renters and the non-property owners are paying. So you're getting some taxes out of that, but at the same point, though, you're getting the taxes from the landlords, but you're not getting it from tenants. So this is, that's what, the reason per capita came out years ago was the feeling that the renters aren't paying their fair share. I don't know if that's true or not, but that's, was the reasoning years ago, you know. I do feel it's a nuisance tax because, you know, like you said, we're charging and getting 80% after commissions.
Yeah, and obviously, like I said, I think we're a little late to make any changes to it now. But I mean, I would definitely be interested in, when we go through this process next year, to look at what that would, what that would be if we would eliminate it. I think that would be worthwhile to see that. Just because, like I said, I'm sure we're gonna have a repeat of every year where there's going to be a number of confused people in the community not understanding why they're getting a collection notice for $10 or whatever it is.
And I think a lot of the confusion is, is most people pay the real estate taxes through the mortgage and they get a tax bill to their house and think the mortgage company got it. The mortgage company doesn't pay per capita or those type of things, they only pay the real estate portion.
Thank you.
Continuing on. All right, I lost my place in line here, hang on a second. Okay, insurance coverage. It's recommended the Board of School Directors approves the following insurance coverage for the period of July 1st, '24 to June 30th, '25. And I'm just gonna hand this over to Mr. Feig.
Basically, the same coverage as we always had. I did shop, I apologize for getting this out today, but attached to the agenda today, the actual mortgage. Sorry, total increase.
Mr. Feig, could you repeat all that?
Sure. I did say we shopped the workers' comp this year. I apologize for not having it on the agenda, it went out Friday, but I did put it in the agenda today. With the quotes we've had, we've had a large increase in our experience modification. Our existing carrier gave us only a 25% increase, but we had over a 30% increase in the experience or claims of this past year. I recommend that we stay with our existing carrier, they came in at 288,000. The other quotes we had was at 357,000 and change and 350 to 400,000 and change. Another company declined to even quote us because of our loss history. General liability went up slightly, property went up roughly $20,000. But, you know, we're seeing across the nation, property insurance or homeowners insurance type things are increasing 30 to 50%. In this state, about 30% this year. You know, the commercial umbrella up slightly. Leader's liability, that's, you know, to protect us against lawsuits and things like that, went up 4,000. Surprisingly, cyber liability went down. Our, I'll give kudos to Joe and his team because they come out and they do a whole testing. And I guess we're way ahead of other districts, so they actually gave us a slight decrease in cyber liability. Student accident, which is basically our athletics and gym classes, that went up slightly. No, I'm just saying, their testing has showed that we're doing what we need to be doing, you know. You know, that's basically our full insurance for the district.
Mr. Feig, you said our claims went up? What, we had an increase in claims?
Workers' compensation.
Workers' compensation. How much was the increase on that?
Uh, it was 30% increase in our experience modification.
Is it significant enough that we are not hitting our deductible?
And workers' comp? We're basically reimbursable, so it depends on how much you have in claims. And the modification, workers' comp is different from liability where you have a deductible right off.
So what workers' comp claims?
There's areas, I don't know, I'm not even sure if I can talk, where our main areas are claims, probably not in public.
Okay, just, I mean, that's a, that's a big increase, I mean, the workers' comp claims are.
Right, well, there's two factors, though, we also had a 5% increase in payroll. So it goes off your total payroll, you know.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Right, but we did have a big increase in our modification because of the claims we've had over the last. And so three-year average is a modification. And the state gets every single claim, so they are the ones that determine what your modification factor is. Yeah.
One last question. Do we have a risk manager in the township? Do we, are you the risk manager?
We actually have a safety committee that meets with the insurance company and the oral employees, I think. Diane, can you address that?
We meet monthly, it is something that gives us a discount on our workers' compensation because we are certified safety committee. There are approximately 15 to 16 members on each year. We meet, like I said, monthly for an hour, we go over all of the hazards in the building. It mostly pertains to employees, however, some of the issues do pertain to student safety as well. So that's going over every month, all the injuries, workers' comp are going over as well. We have our insurance case manager that comes on virtually with us. And every quarter, we are reviewing the larger claims and what progress they're making on that.
Mrs. Kornavaki, I'm sorry, does the safety committee, does that have representatives from each of the school buildings?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
We also, the insurance company sends out their inspectors at least once or twice a year, boilers or twice a year, and buildings, they go through every building because they want to make sure what they're insuring is up to par, if you want to call it that. And then we also, you know, risk managers, you have the fire marshal goes through the building, you have the police that go through the building. So it's a lot of outside people, we don't have one person internal that's a risk manager. We have professionals from the outside coming in.
Okay, I lied, one last question.
Okay.
Do we have to pay every, in a school board situation or in a school district situation, do we have to pay, go through the insurance to pay the workers' comp claim every time? For example, in my industry, if you cut your finger on a knife working in the kitchen and they go and they get stitches, I don't, I don't ever put that through workers' comp claim. I pay the 400 bucks out of pocket, move on, and it never gets hit as a claim because of what you just said about insurance is not, too many losses, they will not cover me. So are these claims big, are they too big for us to cover out of pocket?
I can let Diane, most of the time, almost every incident is reported, but most of the time, there's nothing assigned for loss.
Yeah, that's correct, we report every incident because a cut finger could possibly get infected. A bump on the head, two days later might actually be a concussion. So it's, the claim's filed, but if there's no medical treatment, it's, it doesn't affect our rate at all.
There's no reserve for the claim, yeah.
Sorry, if I may add, we do get like bonus points, if you will, when we do report everything within 24 hours. So that does go as a credit to our reporting and the rate.
Moving on. Student sports accident insurance, recommended the Board of School Directors approve the student sports accident insurance coverage at a cost of $27,857 per year. That's about a $1,300 increase from last year. Any questions? Moving on, it is recommended the Board of School Directors approve the district participation in the Burks County Joint Purchasing Board for the following bids, fuel, classroom and office supplies, art supplies, medical and nursing supplies. How many districts do we have currently participating in that?
16 out of the 18 in Burks County.
And how much of a help are we seeing as a result of it? We participated last year, correct?
Yeah, the biggest thing I see is the fuel bids, you know. The other problem, though, is, you know, this year, I'm barely gonna use everything that we contracted for. I'll be filling every tank up before the end of the year, which I dropped my gallons for next year because this year, we had to contract out a lot of bus runs. But when we did the bid, the previous year was based on our normal consumption, which we aren't consuming as much because the contractors are consuming it. So you're basically bidding out a year ahead of schedule. But we've been pretty lucky with the prices we've been getting. And also, it's also guaranteeing us that we're getting it pre-tax instead of have to go file for liquid fuel refunds on the taxes.
Okay, I think we are on statewide resolution. It's recommended the Board of School Directors approve the resolution to appoint the liaison between it and the statewide tax recovery for the express purpose of sharing confidential tax information with the district for official purposes. tax information with the district for official purposes. I think this is another one that we have to vote on, but we have to do it either way, correct?
Yeah, if we want to still have statewide do our collections. And I think we've done it before, but I think statewide's now merged with Berkheimer, I believe, so they require a new resolution this year.
I think that's been successful and saves us man-hours, correct?
Yeah, we don't have the wherewithal.
And then finally, recommended board of school directors approve to renew the agreement to participate in the Berks County Safety and Security Consortium for the 24-25 school year at a cost of $6,000. Dr. Haller, do you have anything to add to that?
It's a very valuable service that the IU provides for us. I would, I'd actually like to have Eric Seidel come up to talk about it as he works most closely with Russell Del Rosario, who's in charge of the Berks County IU Safety Consortium.
Good evening. Yeah, it's, it's, like it says, it's the renewal. The safety consortium, I believe, is 16 of 18 districts as well, same as the purchasing consortium. They provide technical assistance in terms of safety and security, whether it's our training materials, reviewing some of our training curriculum that we put together. They bring in vendors for safety and security products, set up demonstrations. We have quarterly meetings where we look at instances that are happening in some of the different districts across the county. We debrief those, talk through them, learn from one another. It's really about information sharing amongst the districts and it is, it is very beneficial.
Just out of curiosity, who chairs it?
Russ Del Rosario, who is the BCIU Safety Administrator, is the one that coordinates everything.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. I think, unless there are any other late breakthroughs, that that concludes my report.
The only late-breaking news I have is the Facilities and Transportation Committee with Dr. Fidler, Mr. Fidler, I'm sorry, I made you an honorary doctor right now.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. It's recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the 2024-2025 BCIU contracts for special needs and early intervention transportation. It's my understanding that these are renewals. We did these last year. I don't know, Mr. Feig, if you have anything?
Correct, and it's as needed.
As needed, right.
Yes.
Any questions? That's all for Facilities and Transportation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fidler. Personnel Committee, Mrs. Schaefer.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. And just to announce that, as Mrs. Wilson would if she were sitting here tonight, but she was at the volleyball game, Ashton had six kills and one ace during the game. So we have up for resignations tonight. Any discussions on those? We have appointments. Change of status. Just want to say congratulations to the teachers who have completed their three years of satisfactory service and moving from temporary professional to professional status. We have our transfers. Position reconfigurations. Additional assignments. Any questions on the termination that is listed on the agenda? As usual, our leave of absences. Item I is Act 93 salary list for the 2024-2025 school year. Any questions? Item J, we have our summer PD and classroom move expenses. And then item K is Level Up Berks Plan Education Pathways Consent Form. No questions or discussions? Items A through K will be moved to the voting meeting. That is it for Personnel, Mr. Mel.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Policy Committee, Mrs. Harris, would you be able to take that?
I sure can. So for second reading, we have policies 810 and 819. And for first reading, we have policies 323 Tobacco and Vaping Products and policy 351 Controlled Substance Abuse. The updates to those policies are some changes to the legal citations that are in brackets and some updates to the definitions and language. One of the things that's been taken out of this policy is, if you recall, several years ago, when vaping became a thing, one of the main manufacturers was a company called Juul. And at that time, it was recommended as part of the policy language that you were including that brand name in the policy. Now, as you know, there are literally a gazillion different brands of vapes and vaping products and so on and so forth, so one of the recommendations was just to take that brand name out. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Harris. Let's see, next, we're going to move on to, actually, we have Athletics and Extracurricular Activities Committee item with Mr. Odom.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mel. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the recommendations for changes to existing positions and addition of new positions to the CBA as attached.
I have several questions about this. Do you want to go first?
Well, I would like to, there's nobody here that was in attendance in that meeting, was there? Doctor hearing, yeah. The answer is Mitch, as I can.
Well, we have administration here.
Mr. Campbell's here.
Mr. Campbell, yes.
So, well, my first question.
He was there.
I'll start with the easy one first. Is this adding all positions expected for the year? Because I do not see girls wrestling in here. And I believe that they are due, I believe that they've completed their timeframe for their program, if I remember correctly, to apply for advisor, or whatever that would be called.
Yeah, I'd have to check with Mr. Lagaw.
Okay. I wasn't sure if we do these throughout the year, if this only happens this time of year.
Yeah, I know that they do meet yearly, according to the teacher's contract where this process is included. Central office administrators don't sit in on that, including the HR director, so it's only the high school principal, the athletic director, and representatives from the teachers' union. So our knowledge of what happens during this meeting is very limited, but we can find that answer for you.
Okay. My second question is, I'm just, I don't want to say I'm concerned, but I'd like to know some more information about our artistic director and about our sound technician director. I know we're adding two positions to the high school theater program. Big advocate of the high school theater program, and I think they do a tremendous job. I'm just trying to understand the need for it. The sound technician director only reports to the high school, and it looks like it's only for theater. I know that we do a lot in that high school with other musical programs, but more specifically, we are putting in a brand-new system in the junior high school where we might be able to use someone like this. I don't know, I guess my question is, considering that we're not doing anything new to the auditorium in the high school, and the way things are going, are they going to be able to produce a better program that is comparable to other districts versus what we have now?
I'm going to ask Mr. Campbell to come up and speak to that because I believe, my understanding is there was a lot of discussion about these, addition of these positions at that meeting.
Okay, and then, Mr. Campbell, specifically then, the other question was around the artistic director. I know that Mr. Rugg clearly does an incredible job with set design and gets a lot of parent volunteers to assist, so trying to understand what an artistic director does.
Sure. I'll speak to the, the sounds technician first. Both of those people have been involved in the production of the musical for the last couple of years. Those have been paid for out of student funds. The sound director is more involved with training the students on how to do a lot of the sound and, and to some extent, the light, but mostly the sound. Up until now, that's been paid for out of the student funds. So the student, the ticket sales that come with the theater program. A lot of the theater program has been self-sustaining, but that's been more and more difficult. So we've looked at some other programs around the county that have, there's staffing from other programs around the county, and we are definitely not on par, and I think that's starting to affect the students' ability to maintain their programs. We've also seen a pretty significant expansion in the complexity of the program last two years, and we'd like to keep that going. The artistic director is related to Mr. Rugg's position. He's building the set, but the artistic director is really guiding the students in the finishing of those sets, a lot of the painting, a lot of the design of some of the less structural pieces. That too has been paid for out of the ticket sales. So we're simply not keeping up, and because we've expanded, that's become a little more expensive.
Do we expect if we do not approve these and it continues to come out of the theater budget, you know, from ticket sales and all that, that our program is going to deteriorate?
They will not, they're, we'll see how long they can maintain their account. That's really what it will come down to. It's, they did not, after they paid all of these, they were a little under what they brought in. They've been maintaining, but they definitely are having more trouble keeping up. Some of it has to do with expenses with the materials that are involved. There's been a lot of increase in material expenses. There's also been an intentional effort not to raise ticket prices because we want to make that as an inclusive and community-oriented event as possible, but that's been something that the theater team has been considering for next year.
Okay, thank you.
The only thing I would ask is, sorry, I'm okay, Mr. Campbell. I was just going to ask administration something. Is it possible to put the cost behind each of these when it goes to the voting meeting for the categories?
So again, I don't mean to sound invasive, but it is all in the CBA and it's determined, the pay is determined by a formula for the number of years of service that someone has if they have advisor, previous advisor experience. So the, the cost is really dependent on the, on the person who's hired for the position. We could certainly give you a range, perhaps.
I think a range would be fine.
But we wouldn't be able to give you the actual...
That's fine, and the collective bargaining agreement is publicly accessible through the website for anyone that wants to go look at that even further.
Yes, so they're actually putting what category it is. It would be the level that would determine what the stipend would be.
Okay, thank you.
So how do we vote on this? Do we break this down by position? Or is this, I mean, or do we vote on this as one single memo? I mean, I am legitimately concerned, right?
I think my preference would be to have each position be a separate vote.
You know, I don't...
Or an item, you know, under the consent agenda, yeah.
I mean, I am concerned anytime we're adding positions based on, you know, we know how hard you guys worked to get where we did this year for the budget. I'm also concerned that, you know, the junior high has a brand-new system, and should we consider having that sound technician at least in some way or another get them up? I don't, I don't know how that works, right? I mean, they're going to have a system, I would assume, that's much more advanced than the current system that we have at the high school. So is the next step that we're going to be having to look at a junior high school theater program, or can we combine these positions? Just trying to get an understanding.
I think that's something that we would need to speak to Melissa Karati about. Having been at the school play or the high school musical over the last several years, but in particular on the last two years and really last year, the set design was really kind of breathtaking, what they were able to do, especially with the Von Trapp family. Like, it really was a work of art. And I'm sure the cost associated with that was extremely, extremely high. So I do understand now a little bit better what Mr. Campbell is saying, that there are certain things that are paid out of the student activity fund in order to make these school shows happen, but with the cost of things, they just, they can't cover everything, so something is going to have to give.
So have we ever considered bargaining? I mean, like, do we, do we, do we meet, do we meet them halfway? I just think that as we, I mean, listen, as we start July 1st, and you've already said that you're looking at next year's budget.
We are.
I mean, do we have, this isn't about the theater program, right? Do we have to assess every single position that we're adding to understand what the impact of that is on how you get to a reasonable budget, you know, in 12 months from now?
So again, you know, it's a very complicated question because do we direct whoever takes over the high school musical position to only select shows that have minimal costs associated with it for set design and for costumes? Or do we allow them to put on the production that they want, they want to put on? And again, how is it funded? Right now, it's being funded mostly through the student activity fee, but they're like essentially barely breaking even by paying out the costs of all of these items. So I think, again, listening to Tom, it looks, it sounds as though they're looking to place these positions into the CBA instead of having it come directly out of the student account so they can continue to cover the rising costs associated with the production of the play, which is all of those other things, without raising the cost of ticket prices. So ultimately, it boils down to, do we as a district assume the cost for the advisors in the budget? Do we rely on the student funds and say, no, you have to raise ticket prices, but that could cause people to not come to the play, so now we have even less money going into the student activity account? Or do we put on different productions that don't require the type of very extensive or elaborate set designs?
I mean...
It's...
Go ahead, Dr.
It's, you know, six of one, half dozen of the other, you know, so...
I guess, and my take on it would be if we're putting on higher production shows, we should be increasing the ticket prices, to be honest with you. And I don't know when the last time was we considered looking at ticket prices for shows, but I do feel like if the quality or we're paying more money for shows, I think that, that does, that revenue has to come from, from the tickets, yeah.
Dr. Haller, what's your recommendation?
So again, listening to what Tom said, I do think we're going to have to, we're going to need to add the positions because we just, we can't, we can't have it coming out of the activity fund and then also have them cover the other costs. Or we don't add them and then we cover the costs of the set design. Like, if you want a thriving theater program, one way or another, we're going to have to support it. I also do think it would be important to look at ticket prices. But we can't, we can't do anything with the ticket prices till next year anyway, and we still are coming in basically breaking even right now. So we might have to supplement the school show at some point.
My personal thought is that I could get behind the sound director because I understand that there, there's a lot that's very complicated and it's student-run, so there's a, you know, they're, they're working with them. We actively are using them now. I'd like to know more information personally about the artistic director. I'd like to also know if our current set designer feels as though that this additional help is going to be warranted versus the parent volunteers that they're getting right now.
I do think it's really important that we also not, not promote the arts over sports. Like, every year, it seems like we're adding sports and we're adding multiple coaches to sports. And we have a head coach and we have an assistant coach, and, you know, we, we support that because, you know, especially with Title IX, you know, like, if you have a girls' team, you have a, if you have a boys' team, you know, you have to have the same opportunity. And this is our theater program, and there's kids that, that's, that's their thing. You know, they're going, they're, they, that's where they, that's where they blossom, you know, that's where their, their crew is, you know, that's, that's their people. And if we're going to support sports and have, add sports every year with coaches, you know, and boosters clubs do not fund our coaching staff. They don't, the boosters, the money that they raise for boosters does not go to the district to offset the cost of coaches. And I just feel like I would be remiss to not point that out to the board that we do have with this, with our musicals, these kids, these activity funds are paying to offset the costs that they're incurring to put on these productions. offset the costs that they're incurring to put on these productions. So I do think we need to also take that into consideration.
I want to be clear, I'm not...
I understand, I understand.
I don't want anybody to think that I'm saying that the theater program isn't important.
I understand, but I do, yeah. But I do, I think for, I think, I think for the board as a whole, and also for the community members who are watching that, I do think that that needs to be stated, that, you know, if the boosters are paying costs for coaches, okay, sure, you know, like, that's fair, that the activity fund also offsets the costs for basically coaches. That's essentially what these positions are. So, but I just, I just feel like it's important to make up for it.
I'm not disagreeing at all. I think it's this board's responsibility, when we're adding new positions, that we understand what the impact is and how that's going to affect the budget. I think it's also understanding what this is for. I mean, there's limited information here, and really getting the administration's take on it. Again, I would be asking the same question if it was any other thing. You know, we have volleyball on here twice, however, it specifically states in here that it's for supervisory and safety concerns. You know, there's nothing in these two positions that reference supervisory or safety concerns. I think that the, you know, what Mr. Campbell said is well-warranted, and I do think that technology is, you know, when it comes to that kind of thing, it's, you can't have a theater program if you don't have sound, right? I still question the artistic director. I think we do have to be careful about how much we're spending, and I don't think that I'm saying that we shouldn't be supporting the theater program. But if they're both, if both of those positions are being covered right now, and to Mr. Mel's point, if both of those positions are being covered right now by their funds, and we cut one of them out, then we're saving them a large chunk of money. They haven't raised ticket prices, they are doing larger shows. I'm just wondering where we have to start to look to meet each other halfway in some of these positions. It has nothing to do with the theater program.
I just want to speak to the range based on the CBA for these categories, nine and 11. Minimum for both is $1,900, maximum is $3,800, if you look at Level 1 through Level 8. So, that's your range, depending on what your levels are, so... It's a little more expensive to add coaches than it is to add two-year theater production crew.
I didn't say, I didn't say no. Boy, I'm getting beat up here.
I'll add one thing to Julie's comments. Add another 45% for pension and FICA.
It's a drop in the bucket compared to adding additional coaches to our staff.
It's not about the program. And it's not about the coaches. It is about the fact that we put, we're about to vote for a 3.25% tax increase because we couldn't meet our expenditures. Everything that we spend on in the next 365 days, we have to at least question and understand we're making educated decisions. It's not to say that it's not the right thing to do or the wrong thing to do, it's that we need to have the background and the understanding to make that decision if we're going to ask the administration in 11 months from now to put together a budget that we're happy with, and we have to continue to stay on that track.
No, I agree, and I thank you for always being an advocate for our budget, but... But I think when you look at it from a grand scheme of things and we're looking at a budget, you know, we have a program in our theater department that earns money and uses their own resources and uses volunteer services to continue those great productions, but all of our sports are solely funded except for some funding from the boosters. So I think, you know, we have to look at that as well as being an extracurricular activity that we need to focus a little bit more on and not nickel and dime them because they do a lot and they raise a lot of money to support themselves, so I appreciate everything they do.
As do I.
I have a question. Are there grants available for arts programs? Are there, there is a Pennsylvania Arts Council, there's a local arts council, are they open to requests for help?
I'm sure there are grants available. I'm not sure if the theater department has looked into writing grants for those types of things, you know, maybe they have. I do know that oftentimes, you know, you get into a grant and you think it's going to be, you know, easy to put together and send in, and they can be really complicated. So that would be certainly up to those who are in the theater program if that's something that they would want to pursue. I know that some districts, they have positions that are strictly dedicated to grant writing, but we do not have that position here.
Right, but even, a grant of even $5,000 could, you know, could make a big difference. So I just encourage our arts people to look at the different sources. Also, the groups like the Berks County Community Foundation, the Why Missing Foundation, and then the two councils that I, arts councils that I mentioned.
Dr. Haller, is there, do you have staff members in mind that maybe could attend the voting meeting or at least provide some information ahead of the voting meeting that could speak to, you know, the importance of some of these positions and why we're making these changes?
Sure, I can touch base with Mr. Campbell. He is very involved with the, our musicals because of the funding of the activity fund comes, is in the high school budget, so he's very well aware of the impact of that. So I'll talk to Tom and we'll get you a couple of names and invite them.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussions on cutting any single theater programs, or...
This is the longest I've ever had on my committee. No, no more cutting. Extra volleyball won tonight. So, and then the boys' track and field won the BCIA championship, and then boys' volleyball won the BCIA and District 3 championships, reason why they're playing tonight, now they're playing on Saturday. I would assume home because they're like number one seed, so I think they, yeah, I think it's home until they go to the state playoffs.
Do you know the percentage of revenue that we receive from the PII for hosting events?
I'm going to ask Ms. Haller if she knows, Dr. Haller, if she knows that answer.
I do not, but I could certainly ask, I'll ask Mr. Legat.
Thank you. We can call him, FaceTime him right now and just...
He is probably so excited right now, he's probably so happy.
I just put him on speakerphone. Mr. Mel, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Odom, I appreciate that. And moving on to wrap this up, the, we have public comments on non-agenda items, no one has signed up, but would anyone in the audience like to speak? All righty, we are going to move the following items to our June voting agenda, meeting minutes, Items 5A through N, Items 6A through I, 7A, 8A through K, 9A, and 10A. Are there any board members that would like to be heard at this time?
I would like to speak, Mr. Mel. I just want to give a shout-out to ECEF on a amazing food truck festival we had on Friday. Thanks to all the committee members who arranged that, as well as all the volunteers and vendors that we had, it was pretty cool. And all the dunk tank, yeah, oh my gosh, participation, we had a lot of staff, it was fun.
And another shout-out to Mr. Brown at the junior high and his staff for an excellent career day. I was very honored to participate, I had a little table for students' interest in careers in writing and had a lot of questions. They didn't just come and have their bingo cards filled out, they had questions to ask me and looked at my clips, and so I hope we do it again. Thank you.
Mr. Mel, I just want to say, on behalf of the board and as a dad, I've had the opportunity to go to BCTC graduation, to the senior parade, tomorrow's Back Glory, and obviously graduation is Thursday. I'm always impressed whether I'm a, whether I'm a father doing this or whether I'm a bystander about how special this district makes graduation for these seniors. No matter what they're doing or where they're going, everybody feels really important and included, and really appreciate that and wish our seniors the best of luck as they move on to their next adventure after graduation on Thursday.
Well said, Mr. Morgan, and just a reminder, for those watching, the graduation is Thursday at 7:00 PM at the Santander. I believe it's going to be livestreamed on YouTube as well, like we always do in the past? Okay, there's a, I thank you for that affirmative, Mr. Campbell. It is on the website, so anybody interested in looking for graduation information can find it there. All righty, and we'll probably send out a parents' court reminding everyone, too.
And if I may, I always like to have the last word. I just want to thank Dr. Haller and her team, I guess Jen Breton had a lot to do with it, for publishing the profiles of every graduating senior, what their plans are, even if they're undecided, and there's nothing wrong with being undecided, they're only 18, so they got lots of time to think, but every senior was profiled, and it's terrific, and I've had a lot of good feedback from the community about that, so... Did you say, or did somebody say, this was the second year we did that on Facebook? Second or third, okay, well, it's been well-received, and I just wanted... Yeah, well, I just want to please pass along my appreciation, thank you.
Okay, if nothing else, our next, oh, okay, our next meeting will be our voting meeting on Wednesday, June 12th at 7:00 PM. If there are no objections, we'll adjourn the meeting? Oh, I'm sorry, yes, and we will actually be, before we adjourn, I just want to give a reminder, we will be going into executive session to discuss personnel and evaluations. There are no objections, we'll adjourn the meeting?